Town of Southridge, a joint DPW subcommittee and town council meeting Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, six P M., Veterans Meeting Room. Notes: Possibly forum, the town council may be present and discuss agenda items. Voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members in attendance. Also note that the items listed which may be discussed at the meeting are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So, Councilor Shennon is here. Councilor John Daniels.
He is here, present.
Councilor Rivas, absent. Citizen committee members Steve Lozlo.
Present.
And William Coe.
Present.
I'm going to record show that town manager drove in and DPW director are present. Megan Oates, Councilor Rivas is in. Agenda item number three, review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Shawn LaValle as a laborer as recommended by the DPW director affected upon completion of onboarding and state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend to council approval of this appointment. Discussion. Town manager.
Yeah, so this individual, this individual was very high on the last round when we were interviewing for individuals. We did take an individual that had a Class A license and he did not last that long because it was not the job that he anticipated to be. He was doing, you know, part of that job is a lot of wheel whacking and other DPW functions and that was not to his liking. And we had another individual leave. So this one was very highly rated the last time around and we would have offered a job if it had not been for the license difference of the Class A license. So we recommend that he move forward. He will be at the town council meeting on Monday night.
Rich, anything?
Just to mirror off what town manager stated, I interviewed this individual in our last round of hiring and the only reason why he was passed over was because the other individual that we went with was higher qualified due to having a Class A license. And apparently we did not meet the expectations of that gentleman.
Steve?
I'll throw you to the DPW director. I don't see that he has any Class A or B.
So he has completed his training at Northern, that's Northern Truck Trailer and is in the process of testing to get his license. So we'll be hiring him on as a laborer.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
In the audience? No further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unenvious? Of all those present? Agenda item number four, review and discuss amendment four for the Ashland Avenue Bridge Replacement Engineering to be funded from chapter ninety. Entertain a motion to recommend town council accept the amendment and authorize the town manager to sign related paperwork.
So move.
Second.
Town manager.
I'll defer to DPW director, but however, we are trying to finish up the Ashland Ave. Bridge Engineering so that we can go out to bid. We do have those small bridge grants that we have to utilize, so this is part of getting everything in line for the bidding and construction administration services and the construction operations. So I'll let Rich elaborate on more. He's been working on this.
So just to provide some clarity, we had some issue on this amendment. This was something that originally was issued back when Charlie Blanchard was acting TM. Somehow some things got messed up. There was some confusion along the line. So this is, the amendment is not to redo the existing amendment. It's in addition to what? To amendment number three. Just to clear up some of the, to correct an error in documentation. And then the additional funds are making up for a deficit of funds that were in the amendment three for the necessary tasks within the scope of work for the requirements for the bridge replacement.
We're gonna need a dollar amount for Monday night?
I think that's.
Some of that might be important.
Not to exceed the, 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 the. Task one through five will be ten thousand three hundred and task six will be ninety-nine hundred. So it'll be twenty thousand two hundred dollars.
All the, all the agenda items?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. You think?
Yeah, that was my same question. It wasn't in the item.
Anything?
Those, those question, that some question threw you to the DPW director on easements because it wasn't wide enough. They were going to take some on the right and some on the left. Is that my correct answer? Is that outside?
Well, that's something that we're still in process.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, you mentioned through, through you, Chair, you mentioned amendment three. What was the amount on that amendment? Cause that wasn't in here, so it wasn't checked.
Don't have that information available, but I could probably get it.
I don't have a file. I didn't get it for Monday.
Thank you.
Can you get that to Councilor Rivas?
Yeah. John? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Are those easements issues, the reasons why this is delayed going back to two thousand nineteen?
This is one of those projects that got stalled due to the, the lack of people in certain roles. So we, we're under, currently we're under an extension for the grants that we have for these and the grant expires next July one. So currently, Tyam Bond is assisting us with talking to the state to extend that grant one more time. So we can get us through the construction phase. Same thing with BSC is working with us on that, on the Elmer Street Bridge. To do the same. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Lozlo.
Is there any timeframe that you could put on at this time?
For completion? I'm hoping to be going out to bid for both of these next spring. So I would say within a year to follow, hopefully, depending on construction availability and if we run into any issues once we start digging them up.
Thank you.
You nuts, Councilor?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. So I was going to ask a similar question. This goes way back to two thousand nineteen when we first filed for the June of the bridge. Are these extra costs because of the delays?
So there is, there is extra cost. I don't have all the details with me at the moment. But I can try to get an outline of both of these bridge projects before Monday night's meeting just to answer some more of the questions. But we're unfortunately still running into issues of that timeframe where there was so much turnover and a lot of things just kind of got, fell to the wayside while some of us were trying to get acquainted to our positions. We're just trying to, trying to get everything wrapped up still.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? None. Agenda item number five, review and discuss intent to award HVAC control and maintenance to various town buildings to S and S Service Corporation at a cost of thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars for year one with a five percent annual escalation. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council approve this agreement and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So move. Second.
Discussion. Town manager.
As you're aware, the town had a prior contract with a different vendor that we had done up one year with the option to renew. We decided not to renew that contract at the time due to a variety of reasons. So we did put it out for quotes and this was the only company that did provide us a quote for services to the town for the maintenance of these units. So we're looking to award it for at least a one year. And then, I know we've had conversations before about the possibility of having our own in-house HVAC person. We talked to Rich about that. We'll probably have further conversations because all this does is give us a person to do planned maintenance, pay for additional emergency services. We weren't happy with the other vendor, the fire department's HVAC went down, was down during that big heat, heat wave and was very difficult to get serviced. So this would be a one-year contract for the maintenance of those units.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Now, the company I hired last time, last year, their, their contract was thirty-one thousand dollars. Their hourly rate was one forty-five, their emergency rate was two twelve, two hundred and twelve. The new service is thirty-one thousand two hundred, but their hourly rate is less and their emergency rate is less. So I was just wondering why the contract, the total was higher since their hourly rate is less. Just wondered if there was an explanation.
I mean, they, their contract rate? I, I mean, that's the way they bid it, so that's.
It makes it very difficult because for some reason we just keep getting one bidder. I, I think after having some discussions and putting some thought into it, this type of contract is, is a little difficult in today's environment because most companies don't want to just come in and do service. Basically what this amounts to is your, your annual services for your heat pump systems, filter. We, we do our in-house filter changes, air filters and stuff like that. DPW handles that. But their, you know, boiler cleanings and so on and so forth is what this covers. They do end up with this contract, they end up with this service on, on the other end, which is good for them if, in our case, because most of our stuff is in very poor condition. But getting the interest level and getting a good qualified contractor that's willing to work with us has, has proven very difficult.
So the hourly rate is less, but they're doing, I don't know.
Well, it's, you're technically doing the same amount of work. Like Jack said, it's the way that they bid it and unfortunately that's what we get to work off of. We didn't have anything else to compare it to because nobody else was interested.
I'm not sure you also have town buildings that they're servicing. Is it the same issue?
It's the same. And I did have, I know that there was conversation last year about the airport, so I had Hannah go back through and review all that just to make sure that that wasn't included because it's in the rental agreement and stuff. So nothing changes after what we came up with the last years.
All right.
Anybody else?
I was curious, it's to what? It says various buildings? Is it like a set, like a group of buildings since you mentioned the airport?
Yes, so there is a whole building list for, and, and each, each building has a equipment list that goes with it that was offered to all of the bidders.
So this was just purpose of the agenda item, the scope of services had the list of buildings.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unenvious? Of all present? Review and discuss intent to award elevator maintenance to various town buildings to elevate the maintenance and service in to a cost of ten thousand two hundred dollars for year one with a ten percent annual escalation. Entertain a motion to recommend the council approve this agreement and authorize the town manager to sign related paperwork.
So move. Second.
Discussion. Town manager.
So again, we only have one, one company that provided us a response for our bid. This was the responsible bidder. This is the same company that also does the schools. So it's the same vendor.
Are they going to take care of the police station or is that a separate contract?
I believe, I believe that is a separate contract.
Can we eventually look to make one contract for all buildings?
We are currently in discussion about making multiple contracts to cover all town buildings.
Anybody else? Councilor McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Are you ever going to do anything about the town hall elevator? It's kind of noticeable.
Yeah, so I don't, Rich, I mentioned that when you can smell oil, it's because the oil has to be changed. I lost my sense of smell, so I can't smell it, but Rich can smell it. So once we get the service agreement, we'll have them come in and do a service on that elevator.
So you're going to draw?
So the, the town hasn't had an actual elevator maintenance contract in a few years now. I know we did find out that the library had a quote-unquote unofficial contract with this, this same company. They're very well aware of the town system, all of our elevators, but nobody has actually serviced any of, you know, the DPW elevator, the elevator here. This one I know needs some work. At some point in time, we're probably going to have to look at upgrading it, same as the one with the library. So it'll be, it'll be good to actually have a contractor on board to be able to issue some of this work to them and make sure that we're taking care of this stuff for once.
How does that thing get an inspection? That's what I'm thinking.
Uh, it did, I believe that this year it did fail its inspection and there was some repairs that were made to it in order for it to be re-inspected. But it, it does need some work.
All right.
Anybody else? So I would assume that come maybe budget time next year, we're going to have a incorporating.
Yeah, we're looking at a bunch of contracts to bring in-house and to have one common account when we do the, along with the charter accounts.
All right, great. All those in favor? Opposed? Unenvious? Of all present?
Just to that point, Mr. Chairman, this is, I think, the first time that I recall that we've actually gone out to a contractor elevator in my town that I recall. It's a step in the right direction.
Article, agenda item number seven, review and discuss intent to enter into agreement with Sober Construction Company Incorporated, N L. Partlow and Son, Paving Incorporated, and Pioppi Construction Incorporated for F Y. Twenty-five Equipment Hire. Entertain a motion to town council for approval and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
All right, discussion. Town manager.
I'll defer to Rich, but we did put out for, this is just for equipment on an as-needed basis. And they would do it per the lowest, what piece of equipment they needed, who might be available at the lowest responsible cost. So it'd be like if we go, I know Rich and I have had conversations about possibly doing some drainage work on Dresser Hill. That needs to be done, that he'd be able to do within his department, but might need a special piece of equipment to be able to do that. A one-day, two-day job, you just hire the person and the equipment.
Anybody else? Councilor McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Looking at that list of equipment, it seems to me that we have a lot of that equipment.
We do.
So why do we need that?
So the simple answer to that question is that day-to-day operations are pretty much up against the wall, I would, I guess I could say, with trying to get everything done that's within DPW's responsibility and scope. There's a lot of stuff that's kind of been gone to the wayside in this town. I think everybody here would agree that, you know, roads, infrastructure, so on and so forth. So this gives us the opportunity to take some of our manpower and maybe hire in an experienced operator to come in with a piece of machinery to help do like say a drainage project or, you know, do a, do a repair where we, we just need that extra help. That'll make it happen that much quicker. Whereas we do have a few qualified people that can run equipment. We do have some of this equipment. And a lot of the stuff that's on the list, it's, it's there just in case. It's not something that we're definitely banking on needing. But we want to make sure, just like in a construction project, we, we put certain things into the bids as a contingency in case something comes up in the heat of the moment when you're in the middle of a job and you need something and it's there, you can pull it and it's already agreed upon price and we're not coming back after it, wondering why the bill was so high.
Yeah, but we, we spend a lot of money on some of this stuff just to have it sitting there just in case.
And it's not, our equipment isn't going to sit. It's, it's more along the lines of we have a significant lack in ability in the department. We have some really good individuals that are, have both recently come into the department and folks that have been there for many years. I think the argument is there that we are significantly understaffed due to the requirements that are, that we're up against on a day-to-day basis. And I'm trying to find affordable ways to work around that. And this is one of them.
So, I'm sorry, guys. So to change is, if they were going to change, if they're getting more stuff done, we can grab a, a machine from a contractor, but you're doing the project?
So this would be.
You're going to pay the machine by the hour, correct?
Yeah, so we would pay for the machine by the hour with an operator to come on and come in and, and work with our, our guys, our department and try to get a job done. So like we could essentially hire, you know, Partlow to come in and work with us to do a repair on something or Pioppi or Sober. We have the availability. And this is something that a lot of the smaller towns around us do on an annual basis. And they've had some good luck with it and, you know, under the current constraints that we have in the department with manpower, this is something that if we don't use it, then it didn't cost us anything except for a little bit of time for advertisement and stuff. But if we, if we're able to use it, it will be a help.
So basically it's unit price by the machine with command and then we use it as needed?
Absolutely.
And, and if we need, as councils do, they go over there and say, what about this project? What about that project? Well, under the old DPW, it'd take maybe five days to get something done. Right now, we seem to be getting things done in a timely manner. And if there's a couple of sticklers or waterline breaks or something, we have a unit price that you can go to and just get it done without a lot of accounts.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilor Rivas.
Um, so I guess the way that it's worded, it kind of seemed that it was just for the equipment itself. So I, it, I know it's a little bit confusing. Um, and my other question is around, like, is there sort of a limit in the contract, you know, that it can't go over a certain amount? I see here like wording on liability and, and things like that, but not sort of like, you know, we don't want to blow up the budget either.
No, no, it's, it's nothing like that. If, if this is like, for example, if we were going to do, if we wanted to do a quick drainage project before winter to get rid of an ice condition and we're short on staff because we've got guys doing leaf cleanup in the fall, doing this and that. If we got to hire somebody for three to four days to come and work on, work alongside of us, work with us to get this project done, we have that ability to add a qualified operator. We, again, we do have some good operators that, that work in the department, but they're, they don't do it every day. So if you hire somebody like Jibby Pioppi who can come in and dig, you know, three hundred feet of trench in a day while our guys are laying the pipe and then you start, we start doing the backfiller, he does the backfill. We work one long day, we get that whole job done, whereas our guys would be working at it for potentially a week. Not saying that they can't accomplish it, it's just trying to be mindful of all of the other things that we're trying to get done for the town and get some of these other things done. But in, in the contract advertisement, it is for a operator with, with a piece of equipment. So it's a piece of equipment and it comes with its own operator.
Yeah, I just, I probably would want to see that wording in the item itself so we, so it's clear.
Do we have that equipment in our?
I'll defer to the way we bid it. I think it was equipment, but the scope was with operator.
Counsel, I mean, Steve.
Thank you, George. This is a local arena, as far as I'm concerned. These three companies are local. On top of everything else, they pay taxes in this town. They know the streets, they know everything about this town. I know all three of them. And I don't have a problem with this at all. This is like a backup, as far as I'm concerned. And I would definitely support this. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unenvious? Review and discuss awarding the contractor to replace doors at the Southridge Community Center to New England School Services. Total bid of seventy thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Entertain a motion to town council for approval and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So move. Second.
Town manager.
So this was a project that had been on the books for a couple of years. I'd like to thank John the Flesh and Dean Akbuchi for working pretty hard on, very hard on this, putting this packet together, the bid package as well as the contract. We had had a mandatory pre-bid conference. We had three companies that came and looked at, at this project. Only one company submitted the, a bid package. That was the responsive and responsible bidder. And as such, we recommended the award to them in the amount of seventy thousand one seventy-five. That is for the four exterior doors for the community center. And as anybody saw, those other three side back doors, the side and the back doors, they're in bad shape. One of them was closed with a sandbag in the back of it, which is very dangerous. Those are emergency exits. So all those exits would be upgraded as well as the handicapped access entry into the building. So we've already had a conversation that we may potentially have a change order for that interior handicap because it's not hardwired in. That is on a remote control. When we went to look upon getting the bid out, we noticed that that wasn't hardwired. So we, we talked with the vendor about trying to make sure we hardwire it in at the same time.
Councilor Rivas.
My, my question was around the accessibility. So the outside doors would be?
They're handicapped accessible already. They would maintain the handicap accessibility. There's a push button on the outside of that building.
With the interior?
The interior one does have one, but it's not hardwired. Whenever they installed it and talking to Mark from the school department, they had told them, hey, when you put that in, that's a bad concept. For some reason, that's how they scoped it out. They didn't hardwire. So it's on like this remote control. If you, if you look at this little wire hanging, it doesn't, it doesn't work. So we would have them hardwire it while they're doing the whole exterior.
Thank you.
No, these doors are in tough shape and they're, not only replacing them, it's going to secure the building better than what it's being secured.
Yeah.
Because not to go into details, there will be problems.
Well, this, this bid does call for stamped keys that would be recorded by, handled by Katie to make sure that they're recorded in to, for the security of that building.
Councilor McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. So in twenty twenty-two, our capital budget, we've ordered a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project.
Correct. And windows and cocking.
For the door.
But it was doors, windows and cocking. That's what I have on my spreadsheet. There'll be money left over to be able to.
There'll be money, about eighty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, depending on if we have a change order on that.
Will that go back into free cash?
No, we're going to take a look at doing the windows next and the cocking. We have a lot of work that we have to do down there. So the doors was the most pressing issue right now. And then we'll look at the, the window. We also have the generate project that we're finishing up, that we have to finish up this spring. Oh, this spring, Jesus, it's already fallen. This fall as well as, so we have the generate and the kitchen project that we're doing. So then we'll move out to look at the windows next, whether it's the upper windows or other, other parts. We do, we're doing a flooring project there as well.
Well, the kitchen and that is a different fund source.
Right, it is, but we have all those projects going on.
So.
And we do have some money for roof as well, so we may have to do some roof repairs when we punch the hole through the ceiling for the kitchen.
So how this works is that it comes out of free cash and goes into a separate account or does it just, you just take it out of free cash?
So once it's allocated during, by town council into a capital account, then we establish the capital account. So each, each one has a project number. So I have all the project numbers on a spreadsheet. I think I provided that during the budget hearing. Each one has a project account, so that project account has a hundred and fifty thousand, community center doors, windows, cockings. Eighty-five thousand dollars for roof, say, whatever that specific, fifty thou, whatever it is for that specific project.
So ten years from now, future councils aren't going to say, what's that money doing there?
No, so as a matter of fact, I think we've talked, we've, we've talked about it, cleaning up some of those other old projects. I know Rich has, I know it's a little off topic, but it's DPW. There's a sidewalk account. We also have, if you remember, the Franklin Terrace retaining wall. I think it's about fourteen thousand dol, was it about fourteen thousand? Somewhere around fourteen thousand dollars left in that. So we're looking at saying, okay, let's take that fourteen thousand, add it to the sidewalk account to be able to do some more. But we'd have to come to council to reallocate it because it isn't a project account.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Lozlo.
I commend the town manager and finance department, the department heads. Five years ago, no one knew who was on first, what was on second, where the money was. Rich landed and he was like almost scattering the town on the flight deck. Since we've taken over the, the management with, with Jack Hill being a lot of department heads in this council, I think accountability and oversight of the finances is one thousand percent better. And I think the point that Councilor McKee brings up of letting money hang in the town. I don't think it's going to be like that. I hope it's not going to be like that. But the reason why I think it's not going to be like that, because there's so many wants and needs on building sidewalk rolls, whatever, that the money should be used and get it done, especially when you have an aging building. You constantly work on your buildings. Especially the Hummer. And I know, George, you've been instrumental with the, the elderly center in the, in the department head there. On a lot of problems, we find out. Jack takes care of them, goes to the department heads. I think this is the best. It's been running for a little while. It's all because you know where the money is, you know how to get it done and you have the department heads to get the job done. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So we're talking seventy thousand for five doors?
Yep. It's called prevailing wage. And those doors, and we're not just talking doors. We're talking, taking all the frames out, having them install them, maybe masonry around it. I mean, we're not talking just taking that door off and refraining it. Well, the original scope, when they first estimated it, was eighty thousand, so we got in at seventy thousand. So.
Prevailing wage is going.
Do you bring any of that down?
The Mitch, I was charging.
The DPW.
That's nothing.
Anybody else? See none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unenvious? Of all present? Agenda item number nine, review and discuss the Department of Public Works transfer of twenty-three hundred dollars from account number four zero zero four nine nine dash five eight three zero 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 dash six four four nine nine. DPW vehicles and capital to account number four zero zero four nine nine. DPW vehicles and capital to account number four zero zero four nine nine five eight three one zero zero six four four nine nine large equipment capital to complete the purchase of hot box. Entertain a motion to recommend to our council for approval.
So, who's got it?
Town manager.
So, um, I believe this is my error when we put together the capital allocations out of free cash. I had Alec ask for eighty-five thousand, it should have been eighty-seven one thirty-two, eighty-seven and change. Um, what this certainly is, is we allocated two hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand for the two DPW trucks, and sixty thousand for the DPW directed vehicles, so that's two-ten. Uh, those vehicles came in at less than that amount of money. This would be money that was left over in that lot, uh, that vehicle capital. And then transfer twenty-three hundred, then to your point, Council Mike Teddy, any remaining funds. We have a couple of little things that we still have to make sure we finish up on the trucks, such as radios, um, and maybe some striping. Uh, but outside of that, whatever money would be left would then come to council and I would come back and ask for it to go back to capital stabilization. So once that capital account is done, we will close it out, send the money back to capital stabilization for future allocations. Instead of it sitting there, so once we know, okay, the project's done, vehicles are purchased, hot box is purchased, these are the amount of money's left, we'll transfer it back out to capital stabilization, so it's not sitting there. We have a couple of counts that, to, uh, wh- what I said, uh, like the Franklin Terrace, uh, wall, there's probably a DPW dump truck that was purchased in two thousand and nineteen with like five thousand dollars left. It's still sitting there in that allocation account. We'll look to close those out and transfer those to capital stabilization as well.
This, this expenditure is well worth it, so I think the town's gonna appreciate having this particular piece of equipment over winter. Instead of using cold patch, being able to put ha- hot asphalt down for the winter in these potholes. And, uh, what's good about this, if I understood Rich when he explained it, that when we first purchased, approved purchase of this, it was that anything that's left overnight, you can put it in the barn and plug it in, and it'll be ready to go the next morning, instead of tossing out or be left in a dump truck. So this will maintain temperature throughout the day, and I think that it's been a project, a piece of equipment that's been well needed. Anybody else?
What was the final price on the hot box?
Eighty-seven thousand one thirty-two. That's why we're asking for the money, 'cause we, we allocate eighty-five and it's eighty-seven one thirty-two.
And most of that money came from offer, didn't it?
No, this money came from capital.
Capital, okay. Any other buddy, anybody else? John.
Thank you. What's the life expectancy of that hot box? Let's say fifteen to twenty years, like any most piece of equipment that we have, as long as it's taken care of properly, which I intend to. So, thank you. It'll be, uh, the value is, as Mr. Chairman stated, the, the value is definitely there on this model. We, we quoted out like three different variations of this unit. We decided to go with this particular setup because it can go on one of three of our trucks. So we have three hook lift trucks currently. This unit can go on either of those trucks, so. It's looking right now, in order to, uh, to buy hot mix asphalt this winter, we're, we're probably gonna be sending a driver almost to Foxborough to pick it up, to bring it back to town. So this, this particular model will hold, uh, four tons of asphalt. So we can send a driver first thing in the morning. He can go out, you know, if he comes in an hour early, get out there, get preloaded, come back, and we can have our guys already out on the street cleaning up and prepping the holes that we put on patching. And then whatever we don't use up that day, this has a, it's an oil jacketed liner, so it has a, a two-twenty plug on it. You can bring it back. Instead of during the day, it runs off an oil-fired burner like your furnace would. And then at night, you can plug it into a two-twenty outlet, and there's an electrical grid inside the unit that keeps the oil hot, which will keep a constant temperature on the material inside. So it keeps it up to temperature, so it'll be usable first thing in the morning.
Money well spent.
Anybody else? Seen none? All in favor? unanimously approved, all present. General item number ten, review and discuss the Department of Public Works transfer of twelve hundred dollars from account number zero zero one four nine nine five z- three zero 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 zero. Specialized services to account number zero zero one four nine nine five three four one zero zero. Advertising and promo. We're advertising for the remainder of the F Y twenty-five, entertain a, entertain a motion to recommend to council for approval.
So, who's got it?
Discussion, town manager.
Uh, I think the attachment shows all the advertising that we've done to date and what we may have to do, uh, going forward, so. Uh, we're just asking this so that we can get through for some additional advertising promotions.
So I'd like to add to that, that, uh, this year has been what appears to be non-typical. Obviously, uh, there's a lot of stuff here on this agenda that we haven't done as a town in the past for procurement stuff, and, uh, we're looking to move forward with a lot of other projects, so, you know, as the attachment states, that we have all of these other projects left. This is, uh, something that we weren't prepared for in the budget process because we didn't have all of this information. Advertising wasn't one of those things that we're thinking was gonna come up as an issue. It's, I know it's early in the year to be coming forward with a transfer, but I think that it's, it's for a, uh, a useful cause.
Anybody else? John.
Thank you, uh, to you, Chair. Is this enough of the projects that you've been going?
I believe so, yes. I, I don't, I don't think, I think there was some, if I remember correctly, the conversation that Hannah and I had, there, there, there's a little bit of padding left in there. So, well, if we had something else come up, we'd be able to cover it.
Oh, yeah, you.
And if we have anything that's water-related or sewer-related, those come out of the enterprise fund for advertising and promotions. They will come out, even though DPW manages those accounts, uh, manages those departments, they, they have their own separate advertising promotion budget plan. I hope that come out of that.
Okay, anybody else? Seen none? All those in favor? All those stunned, unanimously. If there's anybody that will have anything they wanna ask the DPW or a manager related DPW, uh, but we're not gonna vote on nothing, so, you have something?
Yeah, cut, uh, two questions. Um, one, how is this, Rich becoming responsible for worrying about elevators? I mean, while it's very much appreciated, but how does, I mean, he's doing the talking on this. Is that the way things have always worked? I mean.
Yep, uh, all town buildings come under the, uh, the Department of Public Works. They're responsible for all the maintenance, uh, and, uh, maintenance and, and bidding and everything. We're trying to help Rich, um, because we do have a lot of projects, so that's why I, I always, upstairs has helped with some of the bidding for some of the other projects. Uh, it's a team effort. We all work together, and we're very fortunate right now, too, that we, we have a good relationship with the school department that has taken on some of the maintenance things that we are doing, so we, we have a good relationship there. There's a further conversation we'll probably have down the road as to, uh, facilities. I know that it's been talked about, facilities manager. I think that's long overdue because there are a lot of, um, uh, a lot of work that has to go in to make sure that these ma, uh, buildings are maintained, um, so, um.
Alright.
And that's, uh.
A lot to put on the money guy with, who'll take care of the town roads and.
But also coming under the control, it, it's a charter dictates who runs, who does that to, I believe, doesn't it?
Uh.
I think their organization charter, oh, the charter.
The town manager is responsible for all town buildings, but ultimately the, uh, maintenance is, it, yeah, it, it does come under.
Right.
And the second one, is there anything we can do to start getting more bids on stuff? I mean, how much will we advertise? Why are we not getting bids? I mean.
So we average.
Things have been good, but things are starting to slow down for everybody.
Well, I think if you look at bids and, uh, um, we had a lot of bids for the bigger projects. I mean, East Main Street, we had, what, ten bids? For the East Main Street project, we had ten bids for the, uh, rail trail. I mean, so those larger projects, but like, a door project at, uh, the community center for eighty thousand dollars, not gonna, I mean, we're fortunate to, uh, reach out to that because, uh, Dean and John, uh, went out through their school, people that they knew that did school projects, that have some of these small companies. We did ask, I mean, we, we did have a lot of interest in the door project itself. It was probably about fifteen people that had called about the, 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 the project itself, but at the end of the day, only one put in. So, um, and there's not many elevator companies out there, so that's a pretty limited pool. And like Rich said about the HVACs. I mean, the, the, those specialized things, that's, that's why it's time to stop looking at somebody in-house to do HVACs for all, all the town buildings. For the general maintenance. I mean, that's general maintenance. Thirty-two thousand dollars just to pay for somebody to be on contract just to do maintenance? That's, what, you know, a good thirty-five percent of the salary possibly, that we hired somebody on, on staff to take care of all the buildings or maybe work with the school department.
Yeah, like I talked to Rich before, he had told me, like, you know, kind of hot subject, but the sewer pumping stations, oil's hadn't been changed since two thousand seventeen and some of those things and.
So, that's another topic.
Steve.
Hey, um, I just wanna, just gonna make it short. Um, I just wanna commend the DPW director, the town manager, and the council for the effort in getting these roles done. It's, it's amazing. It, it's gonna happen finally. It's been neglected for so long. Thank you.
Council.
Um, just along the same lines on procurement and kind of diversifying the pool for smaller jobs. Um, does MMA have sort of like any workshopping or any like tools or resources to help do that?
No. I, I mean, we use, whatever, we use comp buys, we use advertising, we put it on the website, we put out, I mean, we put it out there, we call vendors, we're aggressive in asking. I mean, we can't, I mean, like I said, we had a lot of people interested in it. They take out the bids, but then they look at the scope of the project and they say, well, that's kind of too small for me. I'm gonna do a small, small thing. I mean, I mean, last, I, the last couple of years, I think we've only had one, one company ever bid on the HVAC, pretty much, so.
We did have multiple plan holders that had hoped for each of these projects, and it just, only one bid.
Counsel, Azam.
Uh, just to the director, um, in front of the oak sign, the sidewalk totally looked like a nurse might butt off. It's a viable business that does a tremendous amount of business at times. It's on Goddard Street on the left-hand side as you turn on. Uh, I was on my way in, I saw somebody trip and fall in the door, so I think maybe we should take a look at that. That's a, a little, that's real rough.
Counsel, Azam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, bring you again to the DPW director. Um, I had the pleasure of living across the street from the first dead end road that you guys did, and I got to see it every morning and mid-afternoon, and what a nice, smooth, and quick process it is. It's my understanding that you guys are gonna have all the streets grinded and paved before the winter from the bid that said it has to be done by June thirtieth, which is just amazing. Um, I know P people already said this, but thank you so much. And if we can get another project going to, for the spring that we can bid over the winter time for more grinding paves, I think that's just awesome. It's proven that at least this company you guys work with are seemingly doing so far a fantastically smooth job so far, so thank you very much.
Rich, you're doing a catch racing on, uh, Hartwell Street.
Correct.
Just up the street, right before Marcy, there's a saw horse on the sidewalk. Somebody put a saw horse there because the sidewalk is gone. So Tony, it's about this wide, but it's still, and it's probably a half a foot deep.
Okay, well, look at that. What is it?
Yeah. If you're heading up, if you're heading up Hartwell Street, just before Marcy Street on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
The Brown House.
Yes, uh, next to Minnie's old house.
I thought that was a town, I thought that was a town slot horse.
No.
I drive a motor, that's right.
It's a big horse.
Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
You'll make that motion.
So, one more second.
All those in favor? All those.